I would like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for what is seen as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I will start with a couple of housekeeping items for everybody to know. We have three school committee members joining us remotely, Ms. Haywood, Ms. Badger, and Mrs. Tricelli. We also have an epidemiologist on the line with us, and in a moment, Vedna will be introducing Dr. Nate. The other housekeeping item I want to tell you is the town of Plymouth released a guideline about meetings, and we can only cover in this meeting items that we consider essential. We have a few of them tonight. It will be a brief meeting. Some of the more standard items will be tabled to another meeting. Having said that, I would like to begin with our agenda item that is listed on our agenda as district-wide preparedness regarding COVID-19. There'll be two parts of this discussion. One will be about the virus itself and plans regarding the virus, and then the other half will be about our educational components relative to the closing of schools. So, Ms. Haywood, would you please introduce Dr. Nate for us, please?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I will introduce Dr. Nate. He is not a stranger to us. Dr. Nate Horowitz-Willis was our former director of public, our former public health director, who currently is at the Massachusetts, I'm sorry, he's currently working at the Massachusetts College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences. Nate, if you could continue with that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, thank you, Vedna. I appreciate it, and thank you all for having me onboard to provide some very pertinent information. And also, I'm the International Guard Public Health Officer here in Massachusetts, so I tend to get a lot of information that comes from multiple channels before anyone gets it, and I'm always doing, you know, a lot of research and looking at it and evaluating it. And when we're talking about COVID-19, that is the disease itself. But however, we really don't talk about the pathogen that causes what we know as coronavirus. The pathogen is, you know, sudden acute respiratory syndrome, coronavirus number two. And essentially, when we talk about it, we're talking about the component of coronavirus, which they're very much natural. They happen all the time. They lead to the common cold and kids get it. But the SARS piece is what is troubling. And anyone with any type of underlying cardiovascular condition or respiratory condition, it may be subtle or may not be, you are at a higher risk to lead to some form of death. And, excuse me, if I am being very blunt about this, but I have to just because of what's been happening overseas, and no one thought it was a big deal. And here in this country, I don't think we're getting enough information delivered in easy digestible format. So with that being said, I do want to applaud Gary and also Chris for taking swift action for suspect cases that I did hear about. And I don't think people fully appreciated that, and I want to say that's leadership, and that's leadership that we need from our school officials. So I'm impressed, and I want to say that this virus can last in the body for 37 days. That's the best available information that we have. And you go into a period of viral shedding. So when someone is coming into contact with someone and is exposed, the symptoms might have a lag period from somewhere from about five to 10 days, depending on someone's immune system. So that's someone showing symptoms, but more often than not, younger individuals appear to be asymptomatic. And during that 37-day period, even with the 14-day quarantine window, that 37-day period, you know, they're, you know, touching their mucous membranes, whether it be through their eyes, or their nose, or their mouth, and you're transmitting it. And the transmission rate with this specific type of pathogen is such that it is what is known as the R0 value of about three to three and a half, based off of a lot of the international infectious disease research. The flu usually has about one to one and a half R0. So take that value and basically say, okay, for every person, you're usually infecting about two to three people that you come into contact with. And we know you have that six-foot window or that six-foot buffer from where you can breathe, and that droplet allegedly drops off. Now there's more information coming out and research coming out saying six to 10 feet. And it's not published yet to say 10 feet, but that's what's being talked about in the research world, is 10 feet. And the ability for the pathogen to linger within the air, I mean, it's such that this is staying in the air for about three hours, and then when we're talking about how it's staying on surfaces, it's two to three days that it stays on a surface. So when we talk about transmission rates, this goes fast, and it's appearing in rural areas even faster across the country. So we don't know if it's staying on people's clothing. We don't know if it's, you know, staying on some type of equipment, but people are saying, how did it get out here in the rural parts of places like Arkansas, in Kansas, in Texas? So then we talk about who can, you know, compromise, and those are the individuals that we're most concerned with. So, again, why is this important in schools? It hasn't been said this way, but it's such that children are carriers, and they may expose the community at large to it. And in the town of Plymouth, based off of the last analysis that I did when I did the municipal vulnerability preparedness, I thought years in advance, and I said, we have a high vulnerable population in the town of Plymouth, and we have to protect them. So taking actions that may seem radical is going to help to protect those who are at most risk. And it's not the kids that are at most risk. It's going to be the parents, it's going to be the staff and the teachers, and those elderly that are living in the town of Plymouth. So with that being said, the hospital system in Plymouth is getting prepared. They understand the veracity of this, and Vedna, we were talking about the healthcare systems having to shut down wings, because once this stuff gets on equipment and it gets into someone's bloodstream or the catheter line, we don't know what's going to happen exactly. Italy gave us a good picture of that, but in the town of Plymouth, I can't stress it enough, you guys at the school are the ones that are actually the most forth-facing to protect the community's health in this situation, believe it or not, based off of the data and the numbers. I don't want to get too much into the details. I want to open this up for questions in terms of, you know, what is this pathogen? What does this mean for the town of Plymouth in terms of what the schools can do? And any type of other, you know, advice or recommendations I can make, I'd be more than happy to, but I want to give a quick and dirty presentation on that. Thank you.
That was excellent, quite sobering. Vedna, you're on.
I don't have a question necessarily. I would probably continue to open this up to others that may, since I do work in the healthcare system.
Okay.
So I am quite updated daily regarding the COVID-19. So I guess the questions go out to others.
Go ahead.
I have a question.
This is-
I guess if we're shut down for five, what, we're only doing three weeks now by the governor, but if it's 37 days, does that mean we should be extending hours out even further than we are right now?
Oh, that's a good question, and it depends on a few things. It's likely that we're going to probably see a lockdown. I would not be shocked if we saw a lockdown across the nation, because San Francisco is doing the shelter in place right now. They're doing, they're probably going to do it in New York here pretty soon. So in terms of what was done, it was originally supposed to be until April the 27th, and just to give you context for what's happening here in Boston, I had to shut down, essentially. It was me, I recommended that we shut down our daycare, because the parents didn't understand that their kids are probably the carriers, and if we don't stop them and bring them home, we're going to be causing potential reinfection. So when that 37-day window passes for one person, another person may be exposed and they overlap. So that person that's exposed on a second-dary basis may reinfect that other person, and then you just continue the cycle. And we really don't know how that's playing out just yet, but it was talked about in Hong Kong, and once they figured out in China that, oh my gosh, people are still acquiring this, and we've been, you know, telling people for almost close to three months, so, well, really, in the two-month period, they said, okay, we've got to isolate. So they isolated people and kept them in their little groups, so that they would know, okay, essentially, within about 45 days, everything started to drop off. So this has to be carefully coordinated, and when you study what happened in Japan, and, well, and also Thailand, they carefully coordinated. In China, they had tickets to where they were keeping up with people. I don't know if we can do that here in America, and we might have to. And the school systems, again, school systems in this case are going to be the first line of defense to work with the parents, to make it feel as natural as possible to communicate and say, hey, keep up with your children if you can. But we're about to see some really austere measures in our viewpoint, to where we're going to have to, like, really work really close together. But I think if we play it by ear, to where if people understand there's a 37-day shedding period of someone with no symptoms versus someone with symptoms, the people who may be the highest risk to transmit it have to be essentially isolated, even if they don't present with those symptoms, and those are our kids.
So, Dr. Nate, Dr. Sorenson here.
Thank you.
Dr. Nate, we haven't received, what you're telling us is fantastic, because we haven't received a lot of really good guidance from the people who should be guiding us. So let me ask you a question following up on the 37 days. We will have to make a decision. When it's safe, maybe that's the wrong word, but when it's safe to recommend that children come back to school, what data will we look at to tell us that it's time to return?
So that's a very good question, and this is going to be multi-pronged, and, again, I mean, I do like Gary and Chris a lot, but I'm not trying to brown-nose them. So what you guys have in place is a surveillance system to understand who is in your school from a health perspective to say, okay, when were they last complaining about something? Who may be at most risk? You can take that system, and that's your primary data source, and you can actually look at that data and say, okay, we have a good bird's-eye view of our student population and where their health is right now. And this was the day we advised them to go home. And you can actually create a simple two or three-question survey to send out and say, when were you last traveling? When were you last around a lot of people? And you can create a date of last known interaction with groups of people. And you take that date and you base that on when you want to attempt to say, let's reevaluate. So while the 14-day quarantine window is somewhat useful, you can then kind of gauge, all right, what's going on in the community, and do we open up these school doors en masse? Every two weeks, you should really try to evaluate that data. Now, the other thing you can do from a secondary data perspective is you can look at the epidemiological curve that the CDC is putting out, and I looked at it yesterday. It's not going to go down any time soon. Based off of me looking at it and analyzing it and projecting it out, it's going to be probably another three or four weeks before we have a good idea when this curve is actually going to start to decrease. We're on a 33% trajectory to see an increase in cases almost every week right now. We are caught up with IRAM, if that gives you any idea in terms of where this is going. So the CDC does publish data, but you still have to analyze it to project it out to see the expectation. You know, as a courtesy service, as a researcher, I can loop back and I can say, hey, guys, this is where this is going. And in terms of, in the United States, just looking at who is the hot zone, it's Massachusetts, it's New York, it's California, it's Washington, and Texas is about to be next.
Okay, floor is open for questions. Dr. Miestis.
Dr. Nate, glad to hear your voice. Haven't heard you in a long time.
I like that.
Thank you. So we here in Plymouth have had a little bit of a dilemma when it comes to information. We've had to, and I've relayed my experience in the last three weeks, is if I was a pilot, I would be flying without instruments and in the fog, and that's-
And without a tower.
Yeah, and no tower at all. No one communicates, I mean, it's been very, very difficult for us, so we've had to really rely on information that we have. One of the things that we have received a lot of information from is parents and all the vulnerable population type of settings that you relayed earlier. I think that's probably the biggest deciding factor in us wanting to propose our schools to close initially. And it's been one of those situations where we do have a number of populations in Plymouth that are in need of services that entail what you mentioned, but we also have a number of families that their information has been very limited as far as the things that you've talked about. So I think for us to have good information to share with our families is really important. We try to share that, but, you know, it's been a really difficult three weeks for the Plymouth Public Schools, as it has been for many of the school districts in Massachusetts and around the country. So the information that you shared tonight, we appreciate it. We have done a lot of research on our own to try to figure out how we guide ourselves as a school district. But one of the things that I really want to reiterate and maybe have comment from you is, you know, we have a lot of kids and families that are still pretty much business as usual, and I'm a little concerned about that, because-
Yeah.
I do know that the town did close all the playgrounds today in Plymouth, and that's a preemptive measure to try to minimize exposure. But do you have any advice that you would give to the community for the school-aged population from pre-K to 12 and beyond, actually, because we're responsible for certain kids up to 22? But do you have any advice for families so that they could really help to minimize the potential for this virus?
Yeah, absolutely. One, I think that you guys being still a part of the community in terms of trying to say that, hey, we're still here and we want to let you know that we're not abandoning you as the public school system, to create some kind of normalization is good. And I did. I saw the food distribution, and I don't know how that's going to be worked out, but hopefully with minimal contact and not inside of a building, because that is desperately needed in Plymouth. And I understand that after seeing you and Chris both talk about that, looking at the data. So abandoning that idea, I hope that is not being talked about by anybody, is not a good idea, but designing it in the right way is definitely important. And then number two, in terms of social distancing, people have to realize that it is okay to go outside. It is okay to be with your family unit, but recognize that going to an indoor space anywhere now is really off limits. The playground, they are not a good idea, but still, it is okay to go into the woods but not be around a whole bunch of people. And it is completely fine to, you know, keep occupied, because I think what we're going to see if we're not careful is pandemonium. And I think the school system can offer some structure through electronic means. And I know here in Boston, they're talking about distributing Chromebooks to make sure people have resources that they need, and that's through the city. And I don't know if the town is able to provide that kind of a resource for the school to kick it, to help to kick in some emergency funding for that. But also, having more detailed information for Plymouth is essential for this coronavirus. Having the numbers to understand what is happening around Plymouth, because Plymouth is huge, and you basically have the north and the south, like two towns and one big city, right? So you guys need specific information for Plymouth, like any other mid-sized, someter-sized city, in my opinion, just because of your geography, and you don't have that. And that's what worries me the most in terms of how this is going to spread and who's going to be impacted the most within probably the next three to four weeks.
Floor is open for questions. I'm not seeing any more hands. Let me ask you one more question, Dr. Nate, about how, I want to, I don't want to talk about the adults now, because I know the adults can get really sick. How sick do we anticipate a child getting? Would it be just like the flu? Would it be just like a cold? Because that's important for-
Yeah.
That's important for parents to decide what to do. If they see the child has sniffles, they're going to say, go out and play.
So during this time, I would not advise parents to blow this off. If that, if you see sniffles, if you hear of a sore throat, because the common symptoms are just that, it's going to be a sore throat, it's going to be a fever, and if it's not a fever, it's going to be a little slight cough. And it's highly advisable that you take any kind of measure to boost immunity, and if you determine that, I need to make arrangements to see my primary care physician or to go to a healthcare center such as Beth Israel, you know, Leaky Health, YI D Plymouth, make arrangements to do that. The emergency rooms, I'm predicting within the next two to three weeks, they're going to be busy. So if you can, call the hospital and say, hey, can you advise me on what I should do? Do that. But also know that if you go on amazon.com and you see people trying to take herbal medicines and remedies, those are almost all sold out to help to keep the immune system in check. Those are almost all gone now. So I, again, I highly stress that, parents, please, call your primary care physician, do your due diligence, and looking at the remedies to keep the immune system in check, because with stress and a little small cold, the next thing you know, this thing could blow up, because if you have autoimmune disorder or disease, or if you have asthma, this may exacerbate a younger person's immune system, to throw them in shock, and it could lead to death. Although it's, the likelihood is low, the possibility exists. And then the other piece is, yes, the adults. Adults in Plymouth have to understand that if you have any kind of condition, you're at an increased risk. That's a cardiovascular condition. So I strongly urge, because I know the population in Plymouth pretty well, that people take this seriously, start to quarantine, make arrangements to get the food that you need, and keep the stress low, because this will throw your immune system out of whack, lead to fibrosis in the lung and pneumonia, and that's it. The case fatality rate hovers at around three to three and a half percent, but what we just saw in Italy, they had around 360 deaths in one day due to coronavirus. So it can hit hard if we're not careful.
Okay. Other questions for Dr. Nate? Go ahead, go ahead, Vedna.
I just wanted to expand on just on the adult portion of this, and so what we're learning from Italy is that, one, because of their, the average age is much higher in Italy as opposed to China, and so that's why I guess our fatality rates are a little bit on the higher side. Two, it's also because they also have second, like secondary, like comorbidities, whether that be cardiac disease, asthma, diabetes. And unfortunately, what is odd about this particular virus is it's the way that it kind of attaches to the body, and this is a little bit more like scientific. It's like this angiotensin receptors, and so it's, for some odd reason, people who have cardiovascular disease, it has a tendency to hit them harder, and then it goes down, whether it's, I think it's cardiovascular disease, the next is diabetes, and then actually respiratory issues. And so when we think about our population, in terms of the United States, 60% of the United States has like a second, like or one comorbidity, as opposed to, you know, whether it be cardiac illness, or asthma, or diabetes, and then there are others with more than that. And so these are the people that are more susceptible to catching or actually having this virus be more critical, as opposed to having mild symptomology with it. And it happens very rapidly, like as Nate was mentioning, when you talk about the, like when symptoms start to occur, it could be anywhere from four to five days, to, there are some people that even after this two-week period, this 14 supposed days, some people are actually showing symptomology past the 14 days. So you have to be very, very careful. I don't know, Nate, if you want to comment on that.
No, I think that's wise, but to bring into context what Vedna is saying, when we talk about the top three leading indicators of death in Plymouth, we're talking, cardiovascular disease hovers at two, two and three, and the reason why I say two and three is because you have cerebrovascular issues that dominate with that, but that's really all cardiovascular lumped in there together. So we're talking about, you know, like, you know, stroke and hemorrhaging out with the brain, but it's still, that cardiovascular disease is extremely high, you know, and really cancer's number one. But, yeah, one and two, so that's something just to think about in terms of what this means for the population if we don't get out in front. And the schools in this situation, in my opinion, you guys are the leaders in this right now.
Yeah, we don't want to be.
Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Nate, let me just check if there are any other questions, and then I'm going to give you a chance to just close this off. I'm seeing no's around the table, so any final words from you, Dr. Nate?
Yeah, just, you know, as a, you know, courtesy service, as a researcher, if you guys do want me to do that piece to reevaluate the information as just, you know, as a complimentary consult to say, hey, school committee, this is what the latest data is showing, and to give you guys some more insight into, you know, just Plymouth, and to, you know, advise on that, please let me know. I mean, part of my heart is still in Plymouth, you know, you know a lot of great people down there, and I would feel very terrible knowing that enough was not done for you all to make good decisions and to look forward. So please, you know, if you guys want to take me up on that, let me know, and I do. I want to see you guys make it out of this and not see or hear any egregious stories related to the coronavirus at all.
Well, that was a great, that was a great closing. To have a man of your capabilities at our fingertips, it's quite an asset, so we really, really appreciate that. So thank you so much for being here tonight, and we'll probably be talking again.
All right, thank you, guys. You all have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you.
And we're moving now on-
Thank you, Nate.
All right, bye-bye.
I think he signed off. We're moving to the second half of our discussion on COVID-19, and that is the educational part of it, and Dr. Campbell and Dr. Miestis are going to handle that.
Yeah, Dr. Sorenson and I have a couple of updates, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Campbell to kind of kick off this evening. We have a great deal of information to present tonight, and it's relative to how the school district is looking at moving forward with learning, because we think that's very important. I just want to give you an update on some information that I had from the Department of Education today, and then I'll turn over to Dr. Campbell. He can lead us into the next session that we have. But today, I had a conference call with the Department of Education, also known as the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and they did talk about another, a number of things that we had out there, questions that superintendents were raising, and a lot of them are to be discovered. For example, talking about academics and requirements and online learning, all of those pieces, there are no really mandates for school districts. The Department of Education is more of the mindset that we provide recommendations and we give direction to parents, and we give direction to teachers to try to foster a level of support to students so that they can continue to work on a positive trajectory for academic success. So that is really what we're really talking about. One of the things that is a positive is there are a number of organizations that are donating their services. For example, WGBH is dedicating their whole coverage to allowing educational programming to be sent over the airwaves so that people can actually access these things. So in a sense, what's happening with, you'll- So in a sense, what's happening with the you'll hear later with our our coordinators and directors, and you'll also hear from, you know, Chris and and others that what we have put together and continue to put together are a variety of resources that our teachers are going to be using and guidance that teachers give to students so that they continue that learning through the time that we are that we are going through this. One of the things that the commissioner did say is, you know, in terms of state assessment, MCAS is in flux. Right now, we are in a three-week, you know, leave from school. That three-week leave is will operate appropriately, but right now, there is no plan to pick up with MCAS. When those plans do become available, they will share that with us. There's the our seniors are the most, you know, vulnerable group right now in how we get them graduated. The the reality is, is after this three-week period of time, seniors don't have a lot of school left. So there's going to be guidance on graduation. There'll be guidance on requirement. There'll be guidance on how we actually see this move forward. There there did that. There was some level of communication today from the commissioner that there may be a request by the Department of Education to even move graduation to a later date. But again, that is, there is nothing concrete. I know we'll get a lot of calls, a lot of questions regarding grandparents coming to town, and hey, you know, we planned this a year ago, and graduation, are we going to have it? Well, right now, you know, if if this virus pans out like it has in other countries, I think we've begun to realize what we're what we've experienced in the last last few days. One of the things that we'll also talk about with the coordinators coming forward is, you know, some of the specifics on what's required, what isn't. And the commissioner was very specific that we we are giving resources to families, and our teachers will work to provide those resources. But the requirements, we really can't require students to do certain aspects of the curriculum because concern for access and allowing students to have reliable access to to actually work through some of the lessons and opportunities that will present themselves to our students. So tonight, we have our coordinators here, and they have are going to preview what we are going to release later this week. Keep in mind that we started doing this work before all of this hit. We were preparing and gearing up for it, and we've had to kick it into high gear because this thing just moved very quickly. So with that said, Dr. Sorensen, I'd like to turn it back to you.
Just before we get into the curriculum part, would you please say something about where our families can get accurate information regarding Plymouth Public Schools?
Yeah, the best way for our families to receive accurate information is go to the Plymouth Public Schools website. And there is right on the on the very first page of the website, there's a red tab. If you click on that red tab, they'll take you right to the superintendent's website with a list of resources. Every single letter, every single correspondence that we've sent out is on there. So our sole our communications person for the district is is populating that with every correspondence that we send out. If you don't subscribe to Twitter, our Twitter handle is on our website, as well as if you have our district-wide app, that would be a good idea to download the our district-wide app. That's in the App Store, and it's also on the Google Play Store. You can receive those. You can also go to Facebook and receive information on Facebook if you follow the district, and of course, email and phone calls. So anytime we have any announcement, Dr. Campbell will make an announcement through phone call. So if parents are looking for information, they can probably get it from about five different sources minutes after we make that that correspondence available to the community. But they can also get it in static format on the website, and that'll be logged until.
All right, I just got to say to our educational community, please, please, please do not believe what you hear or what you see on Facebook. Please go to our website, go to the places Dr. Miasis just pointed out because that's where the information will be accurate. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Sorensen, who asked the coordinators to come in now. So sort of in keeping with the comments that Dr. Miasis made about the guidance from the Department of Education, it's clear from DESI that these are non-school days. These days will essentially be considered a three-week school closing. And the Department of Education has stated there is no expectation for online learning and the provision of education services during this period because of the fact that districts cannot replicate what they do in schools. We're not an innovation school. We're not an approved virtual learning environment. So what we do is, again, is considered learning opportunities, as Dr. Miasis said.
But Michelle, you're you're not being heard because I think you're not talking into the the mic that's going over there. Aren't these different mics?
No, these this mic is for the general public. This is for people to hear us.
All right, I'm getting a message that they can't hear you.
Okay.
Your Dr. Campbell wanted to.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I need to drop you off.
So again, with the Department of Ed said that these are non-school days. These days will essentially be considered a three-week closing period. So anything that we're doing right now is considered learning opportunities for our students. So I want to preface that. There's no expectation of online learning, as Dr. Miasis said, from the Department of Education or provision of services because then we have to get into FAP regulations for special education. It's very complicated. This may evolve over time. We don't know. This is phase one. It's important to note that after receiving direction from the Department of Education, which we receive on a regular basis, the school year will not extend beyond the 185th day, which is June 25th. Okay? So again, these are non-school days, and there's only an expectation of continuation of learning, as you've heard us say over and over again. This would be similar to completing enrichment activities, reading lists, math packets, online practice, et cetera. Students should not be completing completing assignments that are due to be graded, and teachers should not be assigning new work or expecting students to submit work to be graded. It's really clear. It needs to be clear. In the future, in the near future, all teachers and providers will be contacting their students to ensure what we're calling a continuation of learning, as I previously mentioned. Teachers will be communicating insofar as they can regularly with their classes, providing they have determined the best pathways towards continuation of learning. And this continual guidance will come out of Mrs. Fry's office. So that's to come very soon. Any teacher who needs assistance in effectively communicating with all the classes efficiently will have the availability of resources, which we will highlight some of them today, of the district closure website. We will also show you that in a moment, as well as our district leadership and our building principals and assistant principals. I need to stress that currently, we are not allowed to provide any digital or remote learning opportunities to replace in-person teaching during this closure. It's really important that we stress that. Again, based on the guidance from the commissioner from the Department of Education. So we're going to be working in partnership with DESI, as they will be with other districts, to develop strategies and resources to sustain learning and vital services throughout this closure period. We'll be talking about food services later on also. So recently, just as a side note, DESI has received a waiver from the U.S. Department of Agriculture for providing greater flexibility for food services in certain communities with higher concentrations of low-income students, and is actively pursuing waivers for the remaining school districts, and we hope to get more information about this very soon. Dr. Miasis and I had a meeting, which we can talk about after the academic presentation, about how we're moving forward with that piece because that's that was a very specific meeting. So again, in a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Colby, who is going to Julia Colby, who's going to give us a sense of how the website has been developed and formatted. And you'll also hear from the academic coordinators, as well as Dr. Rogers and Dr. Hapin, who we'll invite in in a short while regarding the social emotional supports that we're and resources that we're providing too because we feel that's very important in times like this for our students. So it's just important to stress that this is a fluid process. Okay? This is the direction, and it's subject to change, as we've heard from Dr. Nate Horowitz Willis, CDC, DPH, DESI. Things have evolved, I would say, every half a day. We've seen changes, and we're responding accordingly. So the the great work of the people that you're going to hear from here, as well as our building leaders, has been a work that we have been thinking about since the very first case came into the United States. So we've been thinking about this, preparing for things that we're not presented with. So we're this is what we're calling phase one. Okay? And the district leadership is ready to support any new direction. We're ready. I feel confident. We're working a lot of hours, a lot of people putting a lot of time in, but I think we're we're trying to do the best we can for kids and for families with the information that we have. So as this changes, keep in mind the the website that families will receive. They'll receive this information tomorrow. Once we vet it and make sure that it's 100% accurate and and ready to go, that will go out. We will send the communication and and all the methods that Dr. Miasis mentioned. And 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 we're going to encourage people to continuously go to this website. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Julia, if you could just speak to the website and how it's set up right now.
Okay. Before Julia begins, just to point out, to address your question about where to get information, Dr. Sorensen, right now, upon the website, as soon as it goes over, let me click home real quick. Sorry. This is the coronavirus page that Dr. Miasis was referring to in the red button. So this is where we really want to encourage families to go to to get the most accurate information. That page, I believe, has over 7,000 hits since last week.
Hold on one second. Let me just check with Vedner and Lee. And Michelle, can you hear all of this?
No, it for me, it's going.
Not really.
Not really?
No, I can't hear anything.
They can't hear because there's no microphone there on the table for them to.
So maybe they should come up.
Move this to the middle.
Could they come up to these microphones here?
I'm happy if you want to take my place. Okay? You guys come up here, and we'll go over here.
We're making some arrangements so you can hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. So we just showed the front page with the monitoring coronavirus with a red button, which we're encouraging all community members to access to receive the most up-to-date, most current, accurate information that we have as a district. So now, Mrs. Colby will take over and explain to you kind of how this site is going to be set up. And then, moving forward, we'll talk individually each coordinator-director about our specific areas.
Okay, so I'll talk about the structure.
Talk right into that mic, please, or some mic, very close to your mouth. Thank you.
So in the beginning, you're brought to it with the welcome to learning opportunities. And we're going to put an opening paragraph. We'll get that tomorrow. And then we have just a little graphic there that we pulled from the Internet, and we have some information on the wireless connectivity. Comcast is offering free 60 days as well as Verizon, so that's where they can click on those links and get information about that. Then the next one is preschool, elementary school, middle school, and high school is where the coordinators are putting all of their work that they've done. If you click on elementary school, the coordinators will probably go into this a little more. Any grade that you click on, you're going to see links. Some of the links still have not been done. They'll be finished tomorrow, but about 90% of it is done. And any one of those that you click on will open up a document, and the coordinators will speak to that. So that's there. And then we have CCTE, same thing. She put her learning opportunities there today. Student support, special education, that was done today. We're going to we have to verify all of this tomorrow, too. So that's done. And then this brings you at the bottom. When you click on any of those links at the bottom, it will bring you to some more information and some links to documents. Staff ed tech support. What we've done there is we put a form. And what I'm going to do, I believe, is my tech integration specialists will be supporting teachers at home. So they'll if a teacher at home has a problem, they'll fill this form out, and we'll have a schedule on. It'll go into a spreadsheet, and the schools will be divided up amongst them, and then they'll be offering support. They'll be calling the the teacher who's having the issue so that they can help them out with that. Clever is our online, our single sign-on portal for students. So we're trying to make sure that they can log into Clever at home. They can ask their teacher for their password. That's the information about logging in, and you can get to all of our resources that way. Staff resources. This we put together. My secondary tech integration specialist and myself put this together. These are the basic tools that are very helpful tools when doing, you know, online work. So we put them there, and we put support documents there. So if they have the time to learn them, or, you know, we might be providing some PD during this closure. Student resources is just basically opens up a new window and goes to what we already have for school links for the students, but we also put the symbolos there where they could. It's visual, and down below that is the actual links for accessibility. So they can click on any of those and get to those tools.
Okay, I just want to I failed to mention that Maji Burgess is also involved, is watching the watching and listening. So moving on from there.
Thank you. So just specifically to talk academically, we, you know, we've been back and forth as to how best to approach this and and what might work. And and not just that, but what's going to be best for parents at home. And when the parent is is reading any documents that we send, there's already so much of a burden on parents and everything that's going on that we want to make it as easy as possible. So we've all put together resources that exactly do what Dr. Campbell said. We we want to provide learning opportunities for students. We want those learning opportunities to help parents provide some sort of routines with regards to learning. And and they vary. They vary from one area to another because just as any child would during a school day, those learning opportunities will vary. So specifically regarding science, if you were to click on any of these grades, just let's go to grade two, just in particular. You click on the grade two science document, it and again, most every area is is similar to that. You're going to see what we did in science. We separated it by strand. So in Massachusetts, we learned 25% earth, earth and space science, 25% physical, 25% tech engineering, and 25% physical, earth, tech, life science. Thank you. With that being said, we've tried to provide activities for at home that are both technology required and not required. So this document will have activities that are very simple, or like simple, for instance, observe sky patterns, make predictions for future days, collect the data. And we give examples. And again, technology would not be required for that. So we've tried to provide a mixture of those activities that would range from, you know, students that want or that need something to do versus students that need something more rigorous because of where they're at academically.
So these particular activities are just happen to be brought up grade two. You're suggesting to parents, if you have a grade-two youngster and wants to do some science work during the hiatus, there it is.
Here's some work. And we've provided links where needed. We've provided links to documents. We've provided links to websites. In this case here, where a suggestion is to watch any of these Brain Pop Junior videos, we've provided the login information right there for them at their fingertips so they don't have to go from one document to another. And the same goes for any of the grade levels. So the same thing we've done for middle school. In middle school, we did it as a grade span instead. We thought that that was more important. So we all have a grade span document. So again, if you click on the science document, it's going to be suggested activities for any student in grade six through eight. And the same thing with high school. We've done that again across the board. We have a grade span. It's a little bit more challenging, we'll all tell you, at the high school because so many students are getting into course-specific information. But we still were able to provide some generalized learning opportunities for students that that highlight at best what they're doing and and what they can bring to the to the table. That's science in particular. I'm going to give it to. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
No, I'm getting a question from Michelle as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you or maybe Julia can show us. I just tried to follow on, and Michelle's trying to follow on, and we are not getting.
It's not available publicly yet.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, all right.
That's why you're, sorry.
It's not live.
Sorry, Michelle, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, we should have prefaced that. It is going to, no problem. It is going to go.
I was trying to find it.
It is going to go live tomorrow, as soon as, we just, we want to confirm, like, as everybody has said, things are changing, and we're, we've been working on it, but we're still working.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
No, no problem. Dr. White.
Good evening. So I'll be talking about the English language arts opportunities, learning opportunities for our students. I think that, as everyone has said, what we're really looking for are examples of things that any student could do at home without a lot of scaffolding. So for reading and writing, honestly, what I want is students reading and writing on a daily basis. And that can look, you know, that, that can involve lots of different books and lots of different ways of writing. So at the elementary level, for example, we're suggesting, you can pull up grade one, that's fine. Again, just, just the importance of reading every day, and we're encouraging students to keep a reading response journal. We've included links to some questions that they could write about in terms of any book that they might be reading. We have a fiction and a nonfiction section. In addition to that, I have a document that has links to online book options, so there are a number of websites where authors have graciously offered to read their own books to students, and so we have a lot of links where students could have books read to them. We also are referencing Storia at the elementary level. Storia is our ebook platform that we have in the district that any student K5 can access with their code through Clever, and that has over 2,400 ebooks that are available. In addition to that, I have already spoken with Dr. Campbell and Dr. Miestis about other ways of getting books in the hands of students. I'm going to remain open to that, all those possibilities. So for example, you know, perhaps we could have something available with the food services piece, with the, with the lunch that's being offered, those kinds of things are what we're looking into. The other piece we've talked about is having some sort of live streaming of teachers and administrators in the district who would do story hour at a certain time or on a certain day, so people could tune in and listen to me, or, you know, one of us read, read a book. So again, it's really just about providing access for, for all students. And then in terms of writing, we really, I'm encouraging them to just keep a journal, you know, these are extraordinary times, and I think that we want to encourage students to write about what they're doing, you know, what, how it's affecting them at home, take pictures, you know, they can do, any of these things they can do in a very low-tech way with just a piece of paper, or in a high-tech way with any of the applications that we've offered, you know, to them for, for use for journaling or blogging. I also have a section of, you know, vocabulary games and that kind of thing. And then again, at the secondary level, it's very similar. I think again, at the high school, we've adapted some materials that have been made available online by some gurus in the field. But for example, we have links to a number of TED Talks and videos and articles that talk about the coronavirus, for example, and have them reflect on some of those things, so we're giving them some links to look at. But again, a lot of what I'm encouraging is just reading and writing and keeping up with, you know, building your stamina and your fluency with those things. And I honestly think that in today's society and what's going on right now, there's nothing better than escaping into a good book. And so any way that we can encourage that is, is really, you know, what we're supporting.
I don't want to be melodramatic, but once in a lifetime you, you experience a pandemic.
That's right.
So this is a good time to write down what you're experiencing, because 10 or 15 or 20 years from now, nobody will know what you're talking about.
That's exactly right. And that's what we say in these documents, is, you know, this is a, you know, this journal is something that, you know, is a, is a primary source, really, for.
Could be a memoir.
For what, exactly, for what's happening right now. And I think it's also, you know, we know that journaling is also just a great way for students to express themselves and, you know, put fears and thoughts on paper, so I think that, and, and again, that doesn't require a lot, other than, you know, what they put into it.
That's great.
Is there any, for the pop, like, the Brazilian population, is there any going to be any language services? That's question one.
Yes, I mean, you pro, I'll defer for, for part of that, but one of the links on the page that are created is a website called Unite for Literacy, which does have some Portuguese Read Alouds on it. They're really for younger students, but that is something that, you know, we will continue to try to provide as much as possible. Unfortunately, there's a lot more out there for Spanish, as we know, than there is, you know, for, for Portuguese, but I, I, I think we are looking continually for those kinds of resources. We also do have through, for the secondary level, I should have mentioned, we have Overdrive, which is ebooks that we buy for the middle and high school libraries, and so we can purchase additional titles to, you know, for, for Overdrive, for students to access.
And we do, we do have another link on the website, when, when Dr. Halpin comes in and talks about student supports, where students can practice their English language skills, and there is Brazilian Portuguese links on there, so we'll continue to add to that, which is a challenge, but we continuously add information and resources to that section as well.
And the other question, some of the elementary schools have those outdoor libraries, are those a safe to exchange books? Or?
I think that, I think probably, you know, the person that's maintaining that at those schools is not here, so, yeah.
So they're going to shut them down then, or just?
There won't be any books in there. I think if we're looking to, to, I'm sorry to jump in.
No, it's okay.
But as, as Dr. White said, you know, when we have these opportunities such as the picking up your lunch, there may be an opportunity to pick up some books to take home as well. So integrating with other opportunities or scheduling it during other opportunities where families can come in, if they need some books, they do in a checkout, you know, no questions asked, and just sign them up.
I did offer, they'll, they'll attest, I did offer to drive a bookmobile around town. That's been my dream since a young child.
I'm just checking with Vedner or Lee or Amagi or Kim, you guys have any questions?
Michelle.
Michelle, any questions for you guys?
I'm just looking forward to seeing what resources, oh, sorry, go ahead. Nope, go. No, I was just looking forward to seeing what resources come out, just so I can kind of navigate this with my own children. So thank you for, for all you're doing.
You're welcome.
And my only question was that, I'm, I'm curious as to, I know that they aren't supposed to continue to learn, I mean, they're supposed to continue to learn, but we don't, there's no mandated learning because of the governor and it's the technology and everything. But what about our AP students? I haven't heard anybody talk about our AP students, where have those exams been rescheduled, or what are they supposed to do? Obviously, you know, they sometimes have soluses that allow them to continue to learn.
Dr. Miestis.
Yeah, that is a, a very good question, and that question has been posed to the commissioner's office as early as this afternoon, this morning, and that is still up in the air. I think this is a national situation for AP exams, and it's also, you know, one of those things that we're concerned about here, because a lot of kids are needing those, or under the expectation of getting college credit by taking some of these courses and also taking the AP exam. So all of this, we don't have answers to. I'll be very, very blunt and pointed. We, this is on a, on a, as needed, needed information basis, and right now, we don't have the information, we can't share it. So as soon as we have it, we will, we will share it with our community. And I know there are hundreds and thousands of questions that we've been posed over the last two weeks, but, you know, we don't have answers. And that's one of the things that we're frustrated with, that, that we, we don't have a lot of answers. We've asked questions about MCAS, we've asked questions about SATs, about APs, makeups, and they say, just wait. And the College Board is going to chime in, but again, there are a lot of things that we don't have answers to. It's not Plymouth, not, not asking the right questions, it's not us having the information to share with anyone.
Ms. Badger, that goes for the project, the way, and of course, exams as well.
I was just going to say that.
Yep.
That's my next question. Thank you so much. Thank you for all that you all are doing. I know it's taking a lot of time and effort, but thank you so much.
I agree.
Okay, moving along.
Mathematics.
Hi, everyone. First of all, if I may, while I have the public forum, just thank all of our first responders and medical staff out there. I think we're all working together to keep life as normal as possible for people, so thank you. So kind of following suit with what Allison said, you know, I know math can cause some family arguments around the dining room table. I received texts from staff members from time to time with math conversations going on. So my goal was to direct families on, on this website for each grade level to activities that were very clean, meaning clean directions, the websites were easy to follow. There, there's some pretty intricate sites out there, so I really did my best to try to, to filter through ones that were really easy to navigate for families. Project-based, reading-based, game-based. I do want to note, I did put some programs on there that may be subscription-only, but I wanted to include them because, you know, our subscriptions, especially in math, vary. We have some that we subscribe to as a district, we have some that teachers individually choose to subscribe to free accounts, and then several, increasing by the hour, are including free access for everybody. So I didn't want to hold off on providing some of the better web-based platforms for math, because I think in time, if not already right now, they would be accessible to everybody, in addition to students that may already have accounts for them. I included the district resources that we already have on the page, which include, again, vetted websites that our teachers and coaches and department heads may suggest or use, as well as activities around the house, from creating obstacle courses and measuring distance to cooking and baking, to helping parents with the laundry, sorting socks and take, you know, putting the silverware away, so you're welcome for that. Kids should be helping, you know, match things and sort things, and there's many different ways to do that. So again, everything from home activities to online resources to playing card games, board games, Sudoku, just anything we can do to keep the brains sharp at home mathematically and, and with problem solving.
Can you just say something about the high school math?
Sure. Allison, would you mind going to that? So for high school math, what I put here, all of our courses now at the high school level are on McGraw-Hill textbooks, so that comes with a connect at account, so I did put our, our textbook account there. However, Khan Academy, again, is one of those platforms that several of our teachers use, especially at the high school level, because Khan Academy links to College Board accounts, so several of our students, especially, I would say especially juniors, probably have a Khan Academy account because of their work with the College Board, but that's an excellent place for lessons, and students can keep track of their progress on there if they do establish an account, so it's a nice place to just self-monitor and self-paste their work. And they, then again, I included some articles just about math in the real world and where math can take you in the world, Sudoku, and then the district resource tab with some more websites.
Just to follow up on that, so these is, you know, the SATs have been, I think, delayed, so what, you have something up there about practicing math SATs?
Yep, so that embedded in Khan Academy, they, they link to the College Board, which runs the SATs, so they can absolutely practice. And if the students, and correct me if I'm wrong, if the students have already taken the SATs and they have that account, it links their, their results, and they can continue to practice.
So actually, all of our students at the high school have taken, you know, with the exception of a handful, would have taken either the PSATs or SATs, and because they have done that through their College Board account, it will sync with their test results and give them a tailored practice test activities, more, more math, ELA, this other exercises that they could do. So they have that available to them at all times.
So they could certainly can use this hiatus from school as a preparation for SATs very, very easily.
Very well could, yep.
And, and tailor, tailor-made for them at their pace, at their level.
Right, fantastic.
Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have Mr. Cable come and talk about the visual performing arts resources.
Everyone doesn't want to touch my computer. They don't want to touch my computer.
Oh, hi, hi, I will not touch your computer. Good evening, everyone. So I would just like to start off by saying, during this time at, at home, what we really want to do, kind of echoing Dr. White's sentiment, is, you know, and reading and writing, but we want students to create, 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 and reflect, 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 in whatever way that might be, and journaling is one, and, and making artwork is another. This is an extraordinary time, as she had mentioned, so kind of connecting to some social, emotional learning, and having kids, again, reflect and show us what they see and how they feel about what they're going through, I think is really important, and that can be done through a myriad of ways, through ELA and also the visual and performing arts as well. So going along this way, grade four, VPA. VPA is together with art and music, similarly to the other coordinators' resources, some that take technology, some that are very, very simple, and literally will take a scrap piece of paper and a pencil. Music as well, I'd also like to kind of hit upon the point that a lot of these resources, online resources that companies have are extending free. If we go back out for a second, so it's elementary by grade, art, music, suggested learning activities. Middle school is together, as everybody has done the same as well. And high school, sorry, thank you, you're very quick, you're very good at this. So there are, at the, in the art or in the music, there are a couple of resources here through the Art of Education Online, which is usually a subscription service, which is now free for anyone. You don't even have to sign up, they just opened it up and there's a link there, and if you scroll down to some music, so Note Flight is on there, Sight Reading Factory, which we use in our, in our high school, middle school and high school areas, students now have complete access, they just need to, and there's directions here to support at Sight Reading Factory to get going on that. And again, it is, it is practice, it's keeping those synapses moving, creating, thinking, coming up with new ideas, because we all know we need new ideas all the time. And I would like to say on the top of each page is, and I think this is true with all coordinators, is simply contact information for, for us all. So if you have questions, or you're having trouble, or something's not working, please email me. I didn't put my phone number on there, but you can, you can find the phone number, the office number here, and, and get ahold of me, and we can have conversations with anyone. We're here to help, we're here to support the, the learning from, from home the best we absolutely can. So thank you all very much. Really, a little bit of a shout-out to my, my staff. This is not done in isolation, this is done in, in a, in a group effort with, with our, with the visual and performing staff, as it is with, with other teachers as well. Any questions?
Any questions from anybody on, on the phone?
Cheers.
Thank you, Mr. Cable. Thank you, Mike. We'll hear from Mr. Power as we talk about the social studies resources that are available for students and families.
Good evening, everyone. Social Studies follows a very similar framework to the other subjects. We're trying to provide a mix of opportunities that require technology or don't require technology for equity purposes. If we go under kindergarten, kindergarten, grade one and grade two in social studies are taught thematically by strand, so it's history, civics, geography, and economics. So they'll look very similar, and there's some crossover activities, but also a few that are differentiated by grade. So you'll see, for example, under economics, they, the students have been learning throughout the year about the difference between needs and wants. So applying that to the home setting, you know, take an inventory of things in the home and categorize them into needs and wants, things like that, just practical applications of the content that they've been working with all year. There are a few that are linked to videos that support, so one about community helpers up here, for example, that are kind of technology optional. up here, for example, that are kind of technology optional. There's one for geography, for example, where they can take a walk around their neighborhood, practicing good social distancing, of course, and create a map and use their map skills that they've been working on in class. So, a lot of practical applications there. Grades three, four, and five are content-related, but they're, I guess the best way to say it is content-agnostic. It's either building on concepts they've already learned about this year or more general concepts. And actually, if you skip to middle school, so the secondary level, what we try to do is provide a few activities that are more enrichment. Those of you who are familiar with the frameworks for secondary in Social Studies know that the frameworks are very content-heavy, so we're trying to take this as an opportunity to release students, quite frankly, to explore topics that they wouldn't get to explore in depth in the social studies sequence. So, you'll see under grades six and seven, they'll be watching, a few videos are available on topics that they're currently learning about, just to keep that fresh. But there's also enrichment games, Carmen San Diego, so us children of the 90s, this is our contribution to the world here. I spent, I know a lot of countries because of that game, probably how I got to this job. And then, in grade eight, one of my favorite websites is iCivic, students have been using this throughout the years, to play games that actually apply the concepts of government for our civics course. My favorite one that I want to highlight is News Feed Defenders. It's teaching students how to actually spot fake news on social media, which I think is a critical skill, especially in this time, so it's great for adults, too. And then, something else that you'll see at the bottom of this one, and transitions into the high school document, are a series of podcasts that I've curated that are broadly speaking topics that students, again, can make connections across what they've been learning. Podcasts are also great for students that need to be doing some moving around in the house, so if they're outside playing or chores or taking a walk, they can engage that content that way as well, which isn't maybe necessarily the case in the classroom. At the high school level, again, it's broken down by course content, but we're trying to expand the content that they're being exposed to, give them some choice. So, you'll see that we picked a couple of relevant topics here for podcasts in grade nine. Each of these are anchored by just a simple, compelling question of, you know, how does this change your view about that particular topic in history? We've highlighted some more podcasts in grade 10 that would be particularly useful for students for the peripheral connections to what they're learning now. In US History, one thing that we, we have so much content to cover, we don't really get to take the deeper dive into the documentaries. So, for example, they're Choosing an American Experience episode, and really, again, connecting it to what the march of content that they're familiar with in class. And then, to the questions earlier about AP, as a former AP teacher, I know that this is a very precarious situation. There's a desire to just keep moving the content, but these are very difficult times. So, what we try to do here is I've created resources for each of these AP courses where students can review what they've studied so far. And so, Dr. Sorensen, to your point about SAT, it gives them an opportunity to go back and reflect and review on concepts that they are maybe a little rusty on, because it's been a while and the exam will be coming up hopefully this spring. And, for example, under AP European History, I dug up my old online course resources from when I taught AP European History, and it's got all of the videos that I created and great websites I found. And for AP US History, the Gilder-Lamar Institute has a very well-curated AP US History website, and we're encouraging students to go back to the modules that they learned about in sophomore year that will be on that test and as a refresher. So, it's a productive way to help students engage in that content, while not necessarily, you know, worrying too much about getting them forward in that content.
Questions for Social Studies from anybody? Okay, we are ready to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to do Special Education.
Speak close to the mic, please. Hello, everybody, I'm Stacy Rogers, I'm the Director of Special Education. Dr. Halpin and I actually are sharing a tab on the Learning Opportunities website, so there's just a little welcome message, and then there's contact information for either myself or for Dr. Halpin. I'll have Sean go over the social, emotional, health, and wellness. For me, just ensuring that our students had access was really the most important thing. We have a lot of students that are not able to access via computers or laptops or those kinds of things. So, we spent the better part of the weekend and today making what you will hear as Blizzard Bags or Go Bags. So, we did that. Denise and Becky and Janine and some other helpers in my office put together bags for students that they can pick up. They'll be available tomorrow at all the elementary schools. Denise can talk a little bit more about what are in those bags, but for the most part, it's supplies and materials that students are able to utilize while at home. We also included some worksheets and some journals, sidewalk chalk, those kinds of things to go along with some of the worksheets as well. And then, Allison, if you want to just scroll down, the therapy activities, so these are for our students who receive OTPT, speech and language, yeah, you can click it. So, our therapists created a therapy calendar, and it gives kids activities in the areas of OTPT, speech, and wellness for each day through the first week in April, and then if we have to add to that, we will. But if you scroll down each of the therapy areas, it's in a different color. And again, it includes OTPT speech and then wellness activities as well. And if anybody has any questions, parents or teachers, feel free to email me or give my office a call, and we'll point them in the right direction, but we've asked the moderate special needs teachers to be in touch with their families and to help support their kids in any way that they can.
Questions to Dr. Rogers. And now, Mr. Halpern. Everybody listening, getting this at home? Michelle, are you still there?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Hearing everything, thank you.
Thank you, just checking.
Yeah, we are.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Hopefully, you can all hear me. I did work with Dr. Rogers over the past couple of days, today in particular, on trying to collaborate a little bit with, between Special Education and Student Support Services. Obviously, the social, emotional health and well-being of our students is of utmost importance to us at this point. You'll see on the website that we've created for Learning Opportunities that there are a couple of tabs that provide resources for families. One of them is a General Mental Health tab that you'll see at the top there. When we have it broken down, it's under the social, emotional part of it. It'll be a link right to the Student Support website that has general mental health resources for students and families, okay? Also, there is another mental health resource on the COVID-19, which, yeah, you can click on that one, please, which would provide links to websites that will help with parents and students being able to handle and deal with the nature of this type of virus. The other piece that's important, I think, is just being able to know that the staff is going to contact students when necessary, or that parents and students can contact staff. So, I broke that out in a couple of different ways. I put a list of student support staff contacts there, and you can click on that, Allison. That's all of our folks who are school psychologists, adjustment counselors, and guidance counselors district-wide, and, you know, we are encouraging students to reach out. I think as we continue to move on with this, depending on how long this lasts, you know, we want to come up with plans that include direct outreach to families as well. I'll be in touch with the school counseling offices about that, but for now, we just want to make sure that families have a sense of how to handle this with their children as a family, as well as the resources that we can provide for them. The one other piece that I wanted to just share with you quickly is the English Learner tab, and we've provided one particular website that actually Kristen Wilson recommended it earlier today, and I talked to Maria De Silva, the ELA Department head, about this, and it's a suggested resource for all English learners to utilize to help them with their continuing acquisition of English skills. Also, under that link, you'll see a document that has our ESL contacts, the teachers who work in the different buildings, and so we also would be encouraging the families to reach out directly to them, because ESL students will also be working on all of the other areas that you've heard from tonight, as, you know, as we deal with the school closure. I guess the last thing I'd just say is, this is unusual for all of us to be going through this. I can say that in the last couple of days, Friday through today, staff has been great, they've been reaching out, wanting to know what they can do to help support families, and I'll continue to work with them, you know, in the coming days and weeks to make sure that we're able to provide that. I have not been in touch with DCF yet, but I'm sure that I will be to see what their kind of planning is going to be with this. I did go through the McKinney-Vento list, because one of the things that did come out from the state was, you know, the unaccompanied youth category is an area that we have to be aware of, and of our 69 homeless students, only two of them are unaccompanied. They're both 12th graders, they're both living with friends, and I, you know, I felt better about that. All of our kids are with their parents, is what I'm trying to say. So, that was just a quick summary of what we did together today, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions, Ms. Hahn.
I think the part that you just mentioned about the families need to have a sense of how to handle this, that you have a piece on there for that, I think that's important for all families, and I don't know if you can pull that piece out and highlight it, because it might be only the family that's dealing with a mental health issue or a special ed issue that would zone into that tab. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
And I think every, I think every family, whether or not they've experienced this in the past, is going to need this information.
Dr. Campbell.
I think as we continuously communicate out to the general public about this, students are going to experience certain feelings and questions and anxieties, and it's important that we periodically and regularly provide guidance and resources regarding that. We've talked a lot tonight about the whole social distancing piece, too.
I can't hear.
I'm sorry. We've talked a lot about the social distancing piece.
The blue mic, just bring that over here.
For, is another example, one thing that we need to communicate to our families is to help us and to have the students help us in terms of trying to reduce the likelihood of this being spread. This is not a snow day, these aren't snow days, this isn't a vacation. So, information like that, information about how to support students who may be struggling with their emotions, we need to regularly and periodically send out snippets of information, which will go on that website, which will go out through live calls and other social media methods to communicate things like you just said.
I just think as a parent, I would search these documents and hone on what was applicable to my child, and if I didn't think that my child fit into that Resources for Mental Health or Special Ed category, I wouldn't see that, but I think that every family is going to need that piece of information.
So, yeah, and I agree with you, a lot of the documents that we've seen on COVID-19, we've pulled from CDC, DPH, all very good material. These particular pieces really relate to mental health, and I agree, there's a way we can communicate that better. The last thing I'd mention that I left out was, the students who are receiving services from South Bay and Gosnell will continue to receive services during the closure, and I know it was up there through teletherapy, that type of thing, which is good to know.
Yeah, I think this is going to create a lot more anxiety than we're seeing, so, or it already has.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Just briefly, if Ms. Toby doesn't mind coming up and talking about, there's no information to share on the website that will be going up tomorrow, but talk about what's been done to help support our preschool families and kiddos at home.
Sure.
Just to repeat, the preschool information will be on the website tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
We just finished it just a little while ago, and it just needs a little editing. We spent the better part of the day today putting the bags together that Dr. Rogers spoke about, and basically, in the bags are sidewalk chalk, pencils, crayons, there's a little journal in there, bubbles, and then we have some other things that went, that will go along with it, some books for them to color and read, some following-direction type of worksheets. So, that's what we did most of today, was putting those bags together for families. But basically, the preschool, what you will see tomorrow, we kind of did a calendar, kind of like what the OT and PTs did, and, but in each of the days, we broke it up into literacy, math, science, social skills, we did a fine motor, a gross motor, and a speech and language category, and we did that for about 10 days. So, they will have activities for each one of those areas for 10 days. And then, we have links for books that they can read online, games that they can play, science things that they could just use for what they have in their house. So, it was, and we tried to embed everything into what they already do, as far as counting the silverware, when they set the table, and things like that, so that everything is embedded into what they're already doing.
Any questions from anybody regarding preschool? I'm not hearing any. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, while Dr. Campbell's coming back, we finished those presentations, correct?
Yes.
You know, I can barely contain my excitement, and I mean that sincerely. This is amazing, absolutely amazing, what you guys have done with the coordinators and the directors and central office. I would imagine, on one hand, you can count how many school districts in the Commonwealth, if not the nation, are this far along in preparing. Now, I want to say something directly to our students and our students' families. Please do not apply your summer vacation philosophies and/or behaviors to these three weeks. This is not to be taken as a vacation. This is a mandatory hiatus from school, and what our people, our staff has done for you all, is they have created resources whereby, at any time and any day, with any child at any level, you can go on and you can come up with educational activities to keep the child learning. We have mental health contacts, we have websites about the virus, you can contact your staff. We have bags that you can pick up and take home with exercises in it, including bubbles for preschool kids and counting things. We have videos on topics that are actually in the curriculum that your child will have to learn when they're back in school anyway. It just goes on and on, I can't, it's amazing what we've done here, and I really implore the parents of this community to use this resource, so these three weeks aren't just considered days off from school. So, I had to say it, I'm excited about what you've done, thank you so much. Dr. May.
Dr. Sorensen, I think, you know, as we started talking about this work a while back, we were planning for two weeks, and then Dr. Campbell suggested, well, maybe we should have three, just in case. And this come to be that, you know, the governor called for a three-week break. So, in the event that things continue, our team will continue to work at other solutions as we build off of the model that's been demonstrated tonight. So, I do believe if things do continue, we'll see more and more content, we'll get better and better at it, and I think the interaction between staff and students will intensify over time, and I think that's a relationship that we will continue to enjoy, and we encourage
From any one of the school committee members on the phone who would like to speak up at this point? Not hearing anything?
I just wanted to say thank you, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Dr. Campbell, back to you.
Yeah, just want to get, concur with you, Dr. Sorensen, thank all the principals, coordinators that were here this evening, and directors for just the extraordinary amount of hours putting into this. We're not a district, it's, we're not a virtual district, so creating resources like this is, I think what you see here is that things were done with purpose and not just thrown together, so I concur with you on that. So, one last thing that I wanted to say regarding this, we talked about, that some of these things are not based in technology, but some of them are. So, we will be communicating, one, this information, the website, out tomorrow, we'll also be communicating our plan to have the availability and deployment of Chromebooks at our four secondary schools. So, we're working with Mr. McLean's office and his team to get that system in place. The building administration will be helping with that as well, so we will be creating a system and making time for a few hours on Wednesday, and then also, if the need be, days to come after that, to have Chromebooks that would be signed out by family members. So, that's part of our plan as well.
Okay. We just have a couple more items to cover tonight, and we're going to do the Student Opportunity Act.
I think that's...
Dr. Sorensen, if we could, just before we get to that, we have one other piece that we didn't mention tonight that's relative to food distribution.
Okay.
And the food distribution, as was mentioned earlier tonight, we are definitely distributing food, that's prepared food, at Hedge Elementary. And that correspondence has been set out, sent out, and you can see on the screen here tonight. We are continuing to look at how we regionalize the approach. So, we had a meeting today, and we're working to have five distribution centers across Plymouth. And those distribution centers will actually be offering prepared food on a five-day-a-week basis, Monday through Friday. We're working at that. I do have some contacts for some donations from the community to be able to pay for some of the meals that would not normally be covered by free or reduced lunch. We are also looking at partnering with the South Shore Community Action Council to deliver food in bags for a week's supply of food, Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays. And those, that distribution will happen in the same exact location, the same five distribution centers that we will have advertised across the community of Plymouth. Not only on those three days a week will we distribute the bags of food, but we will also ask for donations for the South Shore Community Action, so that we can continue to replenish the food bank that they have, and we'll keep a cycle process. The last thing that I have relative to that is, we are putting together a online registration form for volunteers. So, volunteers that would like to help distribute, volunteers that would like to help collect, volunteers that would like to help on anything that's outside the building. And that's just being, you know, collecting the food on these vehicles that we'll transport in, and just being a good, a good model for our community. So, we will monitor that carefully. We do have a volunteer coordinator who stepped up today that's going to help to manage all the people that volunteer through this app that we're going to send, this forum that we're going to send out. But we're also looking for, you know, a lot of students that need community service hours, anyone that's out there that just wants something to do, we'll put you to work. But I think it's in the greater good of our community, keeping in mind that we're going to observe all the precautions that have been set forth by the community of Plymouth, small groups, social distancing, all the good practices that we've been informed of, that we will definitely ensure that we, we monitor that. So, Dr. Sorensen, that's the latest development, and we'll communicate that through all channels, and we'll get that up when it's ready. I anticipate we'll have that information out midweek, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Ms. Hunt?
I just want to make sure that I understand, because I've had actually several community members ask me how they can contribute to the food services. So, if they want to make a donation-
Yes.
They should make it through South Shore Community Action Council, not the schools?
What I would suggest is, if they're going to donate for school lunches, for the prepared lunch, they need to make a donation to the Plymouth Public Schools, okay?
Okay. And that information will be-
It's roughly, yes, keep in mind, it is $4 a day per child for breakfast and lunch, $1.50 for breakfast, $2.50 for lunch. So, it's roughly $4 a day per child-
Okay.
Per, per day, okay? Keep in mind that if they're going to make a donation, they can make, they can, we are going to actually publish the requested list of items-
Okay.
That people would like, from the South Shore Community Action Council, of things that they package for this time of year. These are the things that we put into the packages, what you'll get. Some of those items need to be replenished, and they need some support with that. So, we will be the distributor of information, and we'll also help with the collection of that.
All right. So, that'll probably be like a separate, like, media blast that'll go out?
It will be another campaign.
All right, thank you.
Okay?
Yeah.
Just to follow up on donations to school lunch program, is that, is there a GoFundMe account, or do we have a vehicle by which people can make a contribution?
You know, we, we take donations from time to time from the general community. And right now, we don't have a GoFundMe account. We, we do have some local partners that we will announce once they've confirmed. But we believe that we can begin the program and help to fund some of these things with local donations. But if this thing continues, Dr. Sorensen, I think it would probably be wise to set up some other funding mechanism to try to keep this moving forward. I don't think it's, I do, I do think we have some work ahead of us on this.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to move on to the other agenda item we have here this evening that we have to cover, which is the Student Opportunity Act. That's Dr. Campbell, correct?
Yes, thank you. So, and this is something that may or may not need approval prior to this meeting, but we can, since it's on the agenda, well, it's timely. So, as you know, the Student Opportunity Act was, was to provide increased funding to communities in a variety of areas. This was passed not too long ago, with the condition that each district had to come up with a three-year, a very, very general three-year plan on how they're going to close the gap in certain areas. So, this plan is presented to you. We were asked to do the short-form version because of the amount of funding that we were receiving in terms of Chapter 70. We're actually not receiving a significant increase at all to our Chapter 70, so we fall in the short-form category. The template that you see that is provided here in the report, the plan, is actually the template from the Department of Education. Their example was two pages, ours is closer to five. So, I'll walk through that with you briefly. So, as you can see, that this, 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 this report is how we're going to enhance the academic and well-being of all of our students, specifically English-language learners, as well as students with special education. So, the first section talks about which student subgroups will be required focused. So, we talk about that in that section. Commitment Two gets into using evidence-based programs to close the gap. So, the Department of Education has specific programs and strategies that they endorse in terms of best practice. Those are reflected in this as well. So, when looking at students with disabilities, serving, supporting students, English-language learners, and also the mental health and social-emotional well-being of our students, we reference here the programs that we have adopted, deepened, and will continue to support in terms of student achievement. So, more specifically, so to get into some of the things we've highlighted, we have numerous programs and other programs in place over the past few years to address academic needs of the students, particularly English-language learners and students with disabilities. It's our intent to continue to follow and expand the following. So, in terms of our literacy, we have found very good proven results with our reading recovery model. This is an intensive early intervention for first grade. We've seen this to really support our early readers, and we'll continue to do that. Expanding the units of study with the phonics, again, in grade two. It's currently placed in kindergarten, grade one. These are things that we'll continue to do to support early literacy. Maintaining the literacy and math coaches to provide targeted support to classrooms and special education teachers, focusing on accelerating the progress of those students to close the gap. Promoting the inclusion model for the least restrictive environment, this is something that we've been working on for a number of years, so we continue to do that with targeted professional development for our co-teachers to plan and assess and to evaluate the effectiveness of that accordingly. We've had, this is our third year with Math Solutions, doing the math workshop model at the elementary. We'll continue to do that next year in terms of providing a math workshop training to our elementary staff. Again, this has helped in to differentiate instruction in the least restrictive environment. You've heard a lot of talk about Panorama and our Student Success Platform. This is now K to 12. We're really happy about this. So, this is a software platform that allows us to look at universal progress monitoring and intervention planning for all students. So, we've rolled this out across the district, and we'll continue to do that next year. And we've also, in terms of targeted professional development, looking at what we call the Universal Design for Learning, or UDL, Inclusionary Practices and Social-Motional Learning. So, these are things that we'll continue to do. We've been doing this either one or more years, and we'll continue to do that to close the gap. In addition, we plan to adopt the following. We recently finished the three-year study to redesign the middle school schedule. Happy to say, we have a new schedule moving forward for next year. This schedule, in our opinion, will better support students with disabilities and allow for fewer transitions and more time on learning in the individual classes. So, we're, we're happy about that. It will also include a Math Essentials course for students that are struggling academically with math, which will be part of that rotation. And teachers will continue to get professional development opportunities to prepare them for the transition to this new schedule. So, that's something that we're adopting. Next year, we also plan to schedule instructional rounds for all levels, at all levels, with principals, assistant principals, coaches, department leadership, focusing on inclusionary practices. So, when you think of rounds, you think of like the medical model, when, when professionals going around and they're doing development together, they're learning about patient's history. In, in the academic world, instructional rounds is when you're actually going into classrooms, you're viewing instruction, and you're looking at what the students are doing, and you're making informed decisions on how to support learning. So, this is something that we've, we've done for a couple of years now. It's very well, very well supported and received. Thank you. I'm having word retrieval tonight. Very well received at the elementary level, and this is something that we really want to hone in in looking at our inclusionary practices with that. As you all know, we recently formed a district-wide diversity committee to gain insight and develop programming needs for diverse learners, particularly in minority students, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and our English-language learners. This committee has been facilitated by an individual who works for TNTP from Harvard University, also includes students, parents, educators, administrators, school committee members, and other community representatives. So, we're very happy about this, and we really feel that this will help us in terms of meeting the individual diverse needs of our community. So, this is a great addition to our structure. We've also recently, through grant support that I was able to acquire, have partnered with specialized career guidance and got grant funding through Mass Hire. And this will allow us to provide targeted internship and apprentice training opportunities for students that do not have particular post-secondary plans. So, we're in the process of working with local businesses, working, identifying students that meet this criteria, and providing them an opportunity, hopefully this summer and into next year, to really start doing training, targeted internship and apprentice opportunities for those students that maybe aren't, didn't get into career technical education. So, below that, what you see are general budget items. So, they ask us to ballpark what kind of funding is going into the things that we mentioned above. So, in terms of the math solutions, consultation, Panoramas for Student Success, Reader Recovery, the addition of English ESL teachers as well down the road. We've talked about that a number of times. Again, remember, this is a three-year plan. This is not a one-year plan. Additional staffing there, as well as district-wide targeted professional development. So, those are some of the foundation categories, budget items that we said would be included in that plan. Keep in mind, the majority of this that I've referenced here is either already embedded in my budget, or it's through a grant that we've already received. So, this is not new funding that we're seeking. This is funding that we have in hand. And then the codes down there really go back to the, the document the Department of Ed asked us to follow. What evidence-based programs do they, do they align with in DESI? And those are mentioned there, as well as the code categories that they've, they've referenced in the supporting documents they gave us. They ask us to look at, how are you going to measure this? How do you know that those strategies and programs that you put in place are effective? So, they look for specific DESI outcome metrics, and then custom district metrics. Of course, we'll be looking at our ALA and Math MCAS proficiency and growth access scores, which is for our English-language learners, suspension rates, advanced coursework completion rates, as well as our four-year cohort graduation rate. Those are the, those are the metrics we're trying to close the gap on there. So, those will be used in reference when we look at our development. And we will get, continue, once this plan is approved, I should say, by the Department of Education, they will be working with us to identify what those targets would, should be, okay? That's part of the process. The custom metrics, we, you know, we value qualitative data, too. So, student engagement, how do we measure student engagement, family engagement, and also the professional development needs of our staff. So, this will be done through surveys, student, family, and professional development surveys. And lastly, I think it's lastly, yeah, basically, this is the last part, how do we engage families in this process? So, as, you know, as we mentioned in the strategic plan, it's critical that we engage families. This is something that we, that we can't do this without family engagement. So, strengthening our partnerships is critically important. This is particularly true with our high-need students, low-income backgrounds, English-language learners, and students with disabilities. So, we are exploring, one thing that we are exploring is the creation of a Family Resource Center down the road as well. So, I referenced that here. I've actually visited three districts that have Family Resource Centers. Some of them are, you know, have availability of staff periodically. Some of them are in the evenings, and some of them are a combination of both. So, looking at that to provide additional educational resources, training, consultation, outreach for families, particularly targeting English-language learners and families that are of high need. These are the families we need to try to engage and break those, those barriers. So, and, you know, we're looking at engaging strategies and creating systems to engage those families. And then, you know, finally, through the assistance of our Comprehensive School Health Grant, we've been able to hire staff, social workers, and a nurse, actually, that have provided some targeted outreach to our high-need families, and will continue to use these grant funds moving forward to engage families in those practices. So, in a nutshell, that, that's, that's the plan that's being proposed for the Department of Education. Again, once it's approved by this committee, it will be submitted to the Department of Education. They will get back to us, probably not until September at this point, regarding this. And then, we'll move forward with the direction and guidance of DESI.
Okay. So, my committee members, this is an action item. So, let's take questions or comments before we take a motion. Ms. Hunt?
I'm good. I just, you know how excited I am about the Parent Resource Center, so, I'm like, that's been like 15 years in my head, so I'm so excited about that, but it's good. I can make a motion if anybody, nobody else has any questions.
Did I hear?
I think someone-
Venna, did I hear you, Venna?
I couldn't hear Mrs. Hunt.
Oh, I said, I'm very excited about the Parent Resource Center, the Resource Center. It's something I've been talking about for a long time, my PTA days.
Any other, any other questions or observations or comments about this? Smittle, this will have to go to DESE after we vote it. Anybody?
I, I think this is great. Sorry. I think this works perfectly for what we've been trying to do, what Ms. Hunt has been pushing, and what, what we finally have with the diversity committee that we've been pushing for so many years. So, this is so perfect. Thank you.
Okay. The floor is open for motions. Mr. Morgan?
I make a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act.
Response?
Response.
Is there a second to that? Ms. Hunt is the second. Are there any questions on the vote, on the motion, rather? Okay, we will take this as a oral vote, and we'll do the people in the room first, and then the people on the phone. Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess? I'm not sure that Maji's phone connection continued throughout the meeting. So, it looks like everybody who is in attendance at this moment voted yes. Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you.
Just one, one announcement from Ms. Frye on where we are with the Superintendent Search Committee.
Yes. Due to the recent situation that's going on, we are going to postpone the superintendent interviews. We haven't selected a new date yet, because we're going to see how this progresses. And once we do, we'll be in touch. And we have contacted all committee members today, as well as the candidates, that we're coming to interview next week. So, they all understand, and we reached out to them today and told them we'll be in touch when we have more information.
And I would assume the candidates, as well as the committees, clearly understood our dilemma?
Absolutely, yes. Yep, definitely.
Thank you. So, the only other thing we have to do this evening are the warrants. Am I correct, Dr. Maestas?
That's correct.
So, Ms. Hunt?
Okay. Whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transaction Summary Report, I move that the school, Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the Report and Accounts Payable Warrant Number S031920 dated March 19th, 2020, in the amount of $1,711,803.61, as presented.
Is there a second? Mr. Morgan is the second. We'll take the vote in the room first. Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt, myself vote yes. And now remotely, Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Ms. Selly? And I'm just going to double-check. Ms. Burgess? Okay, everybody in attendance voted yes. And now the grants revolving. Do we have that today? Thank you.
I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the Grants and Revolving Funds Warrant Number G031920 dated March 19th, 2020, in the amount of $6,767.14 as presented.
That's the motion, seconded by Mr. Morgan. Any questions from anybody? Okay, once again, the vote on the revolving funds warrant, Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
She votes yes. Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Ms. Selly?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody voted in favor. Thank you very much. Is there any other business that come before the school committee tonight? Seeing no hands and hearing no voices, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.